Into the Republic, where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, so we're you're gonna have to be patient with me. I'm filling in for Jamie today. Um, so we're doing this.
We're starting.
Okay.
Could approve the minutes of the April tenth work session?
Okay, so if I can get a motion to approve those minutes from the work session on April tenth.
So moved.
Motion Scott. And second.
Motion.
It was Matt and Scott.
Motion by Matt.
What?
It was Matt and Scott.
Oh, I'm sorry, Matt, I didn't see you. You're quicker than me. And any questions?
Your vote.
All in favor, thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Alright, let's. Any public comment?
We do now, we do have to go back to this one, but it's not over, so that's the March twentieth regular.
Oh, this is what? Oh, okay, now we're gonna approve the minutes from March twentieth, regular meeting, if I can get a motion.
Motion.
Jen and Seconda, Barb, thank you. Any questions about that? What did I say? All in favor, why can't I remember? Thank you. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Erin and Prusher.
Oh.
Uh, nope.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Other? Okay, so move on to the presentation.
Presenting, yep.
Alright, if we can have our student board members for that presentation.
So just to lay a little bit of a group to, uh, Michaela, Randy and I and Mr. George usually meet a week in advance, but because of the short notice of meetings being so close, we didn't meet till this morning. So they were gracious enough to meet with Mr. George and I this morning at eight AM, so they've only had a couple of hours to prepare um from that conversation, so Michaela and Randy, go ahead.
Alright, um, good evening. I hope all of you are doing well. Uh, since it's only been a few weeks since our last meeting, we have limited updates for you guys. Um, as I stated last month, we have eighteen candidates running for the open positions of the student board representatives. Um, the day of the interviews will be next week, May fifteenth, which is a new update. And there will be uh two staff members, both Randy and I and also Mr. George present for those. Um, our goal is to have the new members be present to observe the student board meeting. And um they will be voted in, voted in during the July meeting. Um, another exciting thing with the student board reps is that the Wayne Fender Lakes Voces is offering a um new student board representative training for twenty eight, twenty five through twenty twenty six. Um, July ninth and July tenth are those like training days, kind of like presentation days per se. Um, and most likely, Mr. George, Randy and I, um, we will be presenting all of those days about um student board reps and like the purpose of what we do and how they are not only beneficial to the school, but also beneficial to the student body. And I'm gonna hand it to the ladies.
Hi. Hope you guys are all doing well tonight and hanging in during the pretty busy uh coming up towards the end of the year. Uh, because of our quick turnaround prom and all the APs that have been going on, uh, it's been hectic for me and I know for the both of us. Um, because of that, we haven't had much time to gather out more suggestions from the suggestion box or follow up on some of the stuff we talked about last meeting. Um, but I'm glad to say that we're hanging in the best of the can. Uh, one update that I really did wanna share though was that we reached out to the Director of Food Services. Uh, she's currently out, but we were planning to set up a meeting with her in early June before the board meeting. The main focus of the meeting is going to be uh for us to understand the USDA and the state education requirements for the school meal program. Uh, and how we can try and balance that with um what the students want. Cause I know it's kind of difficult, cause students aren't always um, you know, giving and the demands, but we wanna make sure that we fully understand what's possible to change and what we can change. Uh, to help us prepare for that conversation, we're planning to use one of our weekly prompts to get more student feedback on the cafeteria, anything else that the students want us to know before we go into that meeting. And then we'll likely use another prompt to uh send out this information and see what they want to do with that new information that we've heard about with the uh requirements that they have to follow in the cafeteria. Thank you again for sticking with us during this uh last two months till graduation and uh I really am appreciative of you guys' support.
Thank you, Randy. Well, it's only been a couple of weeks since our last meeting, so we understand. I appreciate it. We're working.
Yeah.
Make sure you're both, cause we appreciate you.
Absolutely. We're doing very.
I got a question for Randy.
Of course.
On the AP exams that you've been taking, have you run across any questions where the topic was not covered in your curriculum?
No, I don't think so. Um, it's just, the way AP asks questions, it's so like, you learn about this, now apply it to this random concept that you were never like actually taught in this curriculum because we just wanted to add it there to see how we can mess you up, so.
Since that with um with an AP, it's always, there's two answers that are wrong, you know that they're wrong. And there's two answers, one that is the correct one and the other one that seems correct, but it's not stated correctly, so it's wrong. And they try to trick you with it, so it's a little bit difficult, but you just gotta know the way between right and wrong.
Good, so you felt comfortable with the exams?
Yeah, especially the two that uh I know both of us taking so far, AP Bio and AP Pod.
Yeah.
Um, and then coming up with, for me, AP Calc, AP Lang, AP Physics, I'm sure I'll get fives on those too.
I like your comments.
I don't really have any.
Thank you very much, guys. Anyone else have questions?
Yeah, Carrie has a question from the floor.
Oh, I see.
It's just a comment, but so I picked up some baskets, fruit baskets.
Yes. Oh, did you?
That thing, and then we were putting them in the cafeteria, the kids are loading them up with stuff they don't want. I have a couple of kids that bring it back to the pit area, so if they get hungry later in the afternoon, they can stop by and load them up.
Good.
Yes, of course.
And they um they've done a good job of like emptying out the baskets that are like uh bananas and apples and things like that, and then the fruit cups too, where they're moving slowly, they're gonna move it.
Great.
I actually saw that today, I was really happy to see that.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate you sharing the ideas.
That's great. Thank you, guys. We have another presentation, Mr. White, on the Disney trip.
Alright, we're back. So, most of you have had had students or relatives involved, or have been on the trip themselves. Um, but obviously we need your permission to A, do a trip like this, and B, take two days off of school to do it. Um, so this would be trip number eight, which is starting to blow my mind. Um, the dates that we've applied for, PS disclaimer, we've been fundraising for a trip for a while, because it takes that long. Um, so if it's not this trip, we can use it for another thing. Um, but we've applied to Disney, we've sent our um our videos in, they've approved us. And we have secured March thirteenth to seventeenth, the thirteenth being staff development day, so the kids don't have school. And we're asking for the two days on the other side of Monday and Tuesday for the kids to be out of school. Um, oh, I can read it better right here. Uh, got that. Oh, and we we tried January a couple of times, one time it was great, one time it was a disaster, but we made it down there eventually. So uh staying with the March timeline, it works a lot better with weather up here, cause it's a lot easier to get out of here. Um, trip insurance, I've touched on it the last two or three trips, it's just the cost is just prohibited prohibited. So upfront, I have the parents sign off, I this is this is what it's about, this is what we're doing. Um, understand there's no trip insurance, I understand there's no trip insurance. We will make every effort to get money back to them as needed, uh or as we can. We have to put non-refundable money down on the airline tickets, usually in the summer. Um, but, and then like last time, we had a couple of kids, when it came to the payment in October or early November, and they realized the friend goes like, we we can't do this, and we were able to fill in, we had a parent buy the plane ticket, we had another student add on to the trip. So nobody lost any money there. But I keep looking and it's just, it would add, it would add a lot of money to the trip, and we're trying to keep it as low as possible. So we've been accepted and we have a performance date on Monday, March sixth.
So a couple of the reasons why we choose Disney for this trip. Number one, we get to showcase Red Jacket on an international stage. There are people from other countries that are coming to perform. There are people that, at Disney Springs, it's open to the public, you don't have to pay a ticket in order to go and walk around, go into the shops, go into the restaurants. So passersby are free to come and sit. And I noticed when we had gone last year that a good amount of people had their food and they were just sitting and listening and enjoying the music. So it's a really cool opportunity with that. The next thing about it that I really, really, really enjoy about it, I grew up in Dundee, um, hi, Chris Nap, if I haven't met you. Uh, I grew up in Dundee and I got to go on a couple of different trips, but the biggest thing about it is getting out of the bubble of Dundee. Getting out of the bubble of Manchester, Shorsville. Having these kids experience a little taste of another country that at Epcot, a lot of our students just hung out in the different countries and walked around the, a couple of them keep telling me, I wanna go back to Germany. So it's nice to see them get that experience and get that exposure. I, we get to let the students see the work that goes into it. And they get to see all of these other facets of jobs that they might not have gotten to see before. Um, that for those kids that fall in love with it, they could look into the Disney College Program if they really love those inner workings going on, that a lot of colleges have that. It's also a nice reward for the students. That in my time here, I've noticed that we don't have a lot of trips. So this is a really, really incredible experience for those kids to go on and have the opportunity to fly on a plane. You find kids that aren't able to or haven't before, flown on a plane is astonishing each and every time. Um, and then the final couple of points, it's nice seeing the kids work towards a common goal. That the beauty of our jobs is that we are in it one hundred percent. Every single kid reaches that role. Most of the time, it's we reach that goal of the concert. But in this case, they get to reach the goal of having the concert as well as an experience and a treat. And finally, that it does meet New York State's standards.
Which is, these are just a couple that I keep, that I pull out every time. Um, so no errors, uh identifying contributions of local art, well, it's not local, but it's foreign. Um, uh performances, all the free performances that they can see, all of the, just the vocal, the instrumental, the people marching around the streets, displaying some drums now and then. Um, expanding their range of career opportunities, even in the field of music, um, even beyond that for this trip. Uh, funding, producing, marketing, uh, uh, using appropriate terms to describe music because they're gonna get a wide variety of musical experiences, watching and performing. Um, and identifying internationally known, high quality music genre, I think, high quality music here. You can go to Rochester and see some good music, alright, um, but we're down there looking at some good music too. And, you know, how do they make their decisions? And I, all that comes back to, this is all one guy, it's Walt Disney, about the land. These were, these are his ideas and how did this all come out of that? So all kinds of cool things.
So finally, the question about it, why Disney? Why do you choose Disney each and every year? I touched on it a little tiny bit, I, in the last couple of slides. But Disney has a lot of experience, they've been doing this program for so many years that they know how to work with high school students. That that's a rarity for a large organizations. Typically, it's just, yeah, I'll get you the tickets, here you go, shoot. But they take the time to talk with the students. That we have a handler who works with us while we are there, and they make the students feel included. It's not just this sitting there looking at their watch. So they have that experience, that Disney is very self-contained. It is hard to get into those parks and it is hard to get out of them, that it is nice because when the kids are there, they are there.
Because we take their room keys away from them and they don't have anywhere else to go.
Yep, and they can't go anywhere else without having those room keys. So we make sure that the chaperones have them the entire time that they are in the park. That the chaperones will like walk with them into the park, stand there, thank you, thank you, thank you. And then they do their check-ins throughout the day. There are multiple check-ins that the chaperones, I keep track of. We also have the large group check-in, that all kids have to be there. We don't move from that spot until every single student is accounted for and present at that time. Do that in every single park that we go to. I, that they, like I said, they offer that opportunity to perform on that international stage, that they get those cultural experiences at Epcot. That they get to experience those other cultures, a little taste of it. I, that Disney, Disney knows almost everything, right?
Those have been able to go.
It's just, it's good there, it's great, it's great for everybody, it's good for the kids that don't like rides, that love rides. The kids that want to go and watch all of the musical performances and the kids that would rather hang out. That the kids that love trying out all these new foods, but also sticking to some really classic, I, meals. And now, as Andy had stated, we're on trip number eight. So he, I kinda just sit back and I go, alright, tell me what you need, tell me what I can do, because he's got it down. He knows all the people to talk to, all the ways around all of it. So this trip is, it's a lot of work, but because of the work that he puts into it and has put into it in years past, now it's just become the second major of it.
There aren't a lot of surprises anymore. Okay, so the cost and what's included, um, hopefully it'll be less than twelve hundred, but that's what I'm telling parents, twelve hundred. So when I tell them, hey, it's eleven hundred, they're like, hey. Um, the group fundraising through the boosters usually brings the cost down about a hundred dollars per kid, um, so that's a little bit. And then there are multiple in individual opportunities to fundraise, whether they're working at a booster event and making, making a percentage of that for working at the event. Or they're doing individual fundraising, like we are wrapping up one of those next week. We had a couple of kids pay like twenty bucks for the trip last time, cause they put the work in. They, you know, it's another opportunity for them to apply themselves to something, this is what I want, and they go for it. Um.
Yeah, throughout the year, we constantly are just telling the kids, that both of us, every single time a fundraiser comes up, push it.
Mm-hmm.
Talk with people, get those communication skills down, because it's, that is a lot of money. But we dra- we draw it out throughout those two years to make it accessible, if the kids are putting in the work. If the kids are actively going out and seeking the money and seeking the experiences, it comes down to just a little bit that they end up having to pay.
Yep. Um, if for some reason, uh, we have a date, uh, June eleventh would be the parent meeting and deposit date. If for some reason, we're starting to push the envelope with with price and we don't have a group, like say I, none of my competitors sign up, then we don't go and we try the next time. Um, because we need an ensemble, if he has no soprano sign up, he doesn't have an ensemble. So, um, we have to be able to have the ensemble to perform, obviously, so that is usually decided, it's, it hasn't been a problem yet. And hopefully not yet, yeah, we'll see. Um, but it's a, it's an option. If you hear, oh, it's canceled, it's not because we're trying to cancel, it's because it just didn't work out this, this year. Um, so costs for the last trip included, round trip airfare four nights in the Disney hotel, mission to three parks, breakfast and lunch each day that we're at, on Disney property. Uh, all-you-can-eat dessert party with private seating for their fantastic show, ground transportation, the day of our performances, because we are cast members, we are Disney pseudo-employees on that day, and we have to get our own transportation, we can't just hop on a Disney bus and go perform. Um, ground transportation to the airports in Rochester, Orlando, rental of a van, taking care of the drivers, then the van goes down with the instruments. Donated food from the parents for the breakfast and snacks, that's always more than we need. And the cusser clothes, so the only thing the kids need to do is bring a bag and a backpack on the airplane, boom, done, that's it.
So the, one of the questions that we get is, is it a competition? We do the Derry and Lake trip every uh year for the middle schoolers, typically every year for the middle schoolers. That one is a competition, that one they go, they compete, they get scored, they get judged. This one, on the other hand, is not. Uh, there is the process of audition tapes. We have to submit audition tapes to Disney and get approved. So it's not this, I mean, I know you can do it. And they actually watch them, they, Andy and I both received feedback, saying, hey, um, so this is what we see, this is what we want, and this is what we need. So send it back to us with that and we'll review it again. So it's not this automatic gold seal, yeah, whatever, we'll take your money. So that right there in itself gets that want and desire for the kids. When we brought it up to them, they're like, oh, wait, audition, huh? So it's not a competition, it's just a nice way to still perform while they're there, to get that experience while also having the joy of showing their hardworking dedication that they put into the classroom each and every day.
It is a very hectic day of performances.
Yes.
Because we sh- we share one bus and we have two performances, and the chorus is getting dropped off and the band is getting picked up and then, and then they gotta walk out of the stage and there's a lot going on on that day, so competition. Um, so, questions?
So when would you anticipate leaving? What?
Um, that, again, I started shopping around for airfare, cause we've always used Southwest, cause they're, those are the biggest planes flying out of Rochester. Um, Southwest doesn't release their tickets until it'll be late summer probably for this trip. I finally looked into s- to um JetBlue and they quoted me a price that was almost double what we paid last time. So I'm gonna wait and see what Southwest says. If we get an early morning, uh, I already actually sent a questionnaire out to the kids, like if we get an early morning flight out of Buffalo or something at six AM, you wanna do that? And it's been a hundred percent yes.
So would you leave on a Friday or a Sunday?
Friday. The kids would only miss Friday.
But they don't miss Friday.
But they don't miss Friday.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that it's closed on Friday.
Yep, yeah, schools, yeah.
So you'll be making up that professional development.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely developed.
Sign me up. Actually, I had to do one last time, cause we went, we went to Naples for music, I had to do one of the online trainings, but yes.
As cast members, do the students basically go and run around tunnels and do the back to back?
No, we, there was, the first year we were there, we were, we we performed at Epcot, cause it was our first trip and I was like, I don't wanna go perform in a mall, you know, outdoor mall. Um, so we ended up parking backstage behind Italy and then we walked in behind the imagination pyramids thing, so we were backstage for that one. Um, but what I found out there was, we had twenty-three people watching us. So when you perform at uh Disney Springs, you've got a hundred, two hundred people sitting there watching you, which I think is a lot more exciting for the kids. And then, and there we, we just walk it in from the, from the bus parking, we walk around in the backstage, you know.
Pavilion was full for both shows last time.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And the chorus, which was the second one after lunch, it was standing.
Yep.
Yeah, cause it was lunchtime, yeah.
Yeah, it was perfect.
Mm-hmm, oh yeah, it was.
So you drove the crowd.
Yeah.
Hmm, that's that perk of being at Disney Springs where people don't have to pay to go.
Yeah.
I know my parents, when they've gone down to Florida, that they've just gone, let's have over, that's why we're around.
My parents, but I, I know, I know how to get in for it, my parents, my siblings, everybody down there.
Yeah.
I can speak personally for Mr. White and his program and and the band and the chorus, having gone multiple times on the trip with the Disney kids. Um, it's a well-oiled machine, he knows what he's doing, these kids are safe, cause that's a big question with a lot of parents are, is my kid gonna be safe? Can I just let my kid go, you know, for two hours and then check in somewhere? Uh, the chaperones he chooses, he's very diligent in picking good chaperones. Um, and I can tell you from being a chaperone myself multiple, multiple times, that uh the kids are good with it. Um, it's a great opportunity.
The kids are incredible.
Yeah, the kids are, the kids are incredible.
When we say we need this, they do it. It's not, it's not, they're, they're, um, they're a little more receptive to being helpful and and bending if we have to change some plans or something like that, it's really nice to see.
Well, they're the happiest place on earth.
It's true.
And as you said, many of those students have never been on an airplane or out of the state or out of the county.
Mm-hmm.
So, and and they're just, you can just see them, you know, when they're there, the awe, you know, their faces when they're there. It's incredible, I, even I enjoy it, every time I go back and heck, I'm, I'm an old woman, I still like the place, yeah. Kudos to you and your program and this trip.
Yeah, I know how hard you work and how well-oiled it is, like you said, it is, that, well, from my child, having them, they love it and you do a great job. Many, many hours go into it and things like I could never even contemplate.
It saves them money, yeah, cause we could just, we could just plot it off on a travel agent, but then.
That's gonna go up, two hundred plus each kid.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not even for the overall cost, but each kid is gonna have to pay two hundred plus more dollars.
How many kids are you anticipating on?
I mean, we have a, over eighty for sure, eligible, and then they'll see what the deposits are.
Yeah.
And then how many adults go on there?
Depends on how many students that we have to keep it within um the guidelines.
Those ga- guidelines are a little bigger. We try to keep it two rooms per chaperone, I think the guidelines are up to two. Yeah, so two, two and a half, ten, ten would be the most.
Per chaperone.
Per chaperone.
Well, thank you. I want to ask the other question.
Just, just pointing out, that Friday night, there's a SpaceX launch less than hour and a half away. If you can.
You can see, you can see the co- the the trail from Orlando sometimes, depends on which way it's, it's facing, yep.
Yeah.
We were down there this April and we were hoping for a launch, but didn't get to see one, yeah, very cool.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
You, you go try and catch open house at Fairbrook.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yep, I was gonna give an update too, if there was. So this is now the opportunity, uh, the budget has been approved by the board at the last meeting, but this is the time where anyone in the community may ask any questions about the budget, about the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. The required documents is over there, I couldn't find a table, it's on the ledge there, if anybody would like to peruse it, but uh, the hearing is now open. Well, I'm just gonna give the board a little bit of an update, hopefully keep that within three minutes, just because uh the state did somewhat pass the budget last night. State aid runs came out last night around nine twenty-two. And we are, um, we have also learned, um, some of the bills that are included. So in terms of state aid, ours was relatively around the same as the governor's proposal. We lost eight thousand dollars in foundation aid. Uh, all the other aids remain the same, what we expected. Um, a benefit was they did extend the retiree, uh, no cap on earnings for retirees under sixty-five for additional two years, which we do have a retiree who's teaches in the district, so we're, she's ecstatic, that she'll be able to continue to help us next year. Electric bus, even though it was silent in all the proposals, they did come out and say, um, that they, they will there'll be approved outside, um, companies who will be doing feasibility studies to get an extended waiver, but it looks like there'll be a two-year waiver on the twenty twenty-seven, will now be the twenty twenty-nine, um, where we have to start buying electric buses, and then we'll be, uh, partaking in this audit to see if the district, if it's a feasible for the district to be able to do it after that time. So we talked about already, cell phone, uh, ban from bell to bell, uh, especially at our open night, we had people ask some questions, like does that mean in between periods, cell phones can be used? Nope, that means pretty much from seven thirty to two fifteen, cell phones will be, or any, uh, I keep, we keep saying cell phones, but what I'm worrying right here also will not be usable during that time. And uh, the last, are two more things, uh, the Voces, we've been asking for this for twenty years at least, that the cap on Voces employees that are able, has always been thirty K, thirty thousand. that the cap on BOSEs employees that are able, has always been thirty K, thirty thousand dollars, we can receive ADOT only the first thirty thousand, they have a two-year plan to increase that to sixty thousand. So we're not sure what the number will be next year, but in two years, it'll be sixty thousand. And it looks like both the state and the federal have approved free lunch funding for the school year next year, so we are moving forward and keeping the free lunches just like we anticipated. So we'll officially, well, before I talk, that should have closed the budget hearing, but the budget hearing is officially closed.
Okay.
And we'll move on to consent agenda.
Can I pull back up there, sorry? We are, yeah, right there, that's our motion. So just hold on a minute.
Yep.
Okay, so we are gonna vote on the consent agenda for personnel, let's everyone get a chance to check that out. And, um, can I get a motion? And a second, thank you.
Sorry, there.
Okay, Jim, um, any questions? All those in favor?
Yeah.
And you opposed that? All right, thank you very much. So we'll move on to the CSE and CPSC report, um, for approval, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Okay. And a second. And, and any questions for Karen? Karen's waiting. Some good questions.
There was one that's done in one of your stuff that, what is it showing?
The CPSC, you've done that. Thanks for all you heard from Karen. Um, no questions, please, sir?
Okay.
So all those in favor? And any opposed?
No.
All right, we're along to reports and correspondence. Everyone?
This is just, these are, this is just an acknowledgement.
Oh, this is.
Right, Tim, when's all the work?
Uh, yes, so that I should kind of, don't change it to that, since it's in the.
Just acknowledge, use technology, you have technology that's, that's effective or is you're accepting it on behalf of the order.
Okay.
You can ask a question first.
Yeah, I do, you can ask questions.
Just, just.
No questions. Just the points are important.
Okay.
Is it true?
So I'll accept it. Again, does anyone have any questions in regard to, um, the.
Claims audit.
Claimed audit report? And then, I guess.
It was not there.
Oh yeah, there wasn't one in stock, but I left it out there thinking that there might be one turned in, yours.
No. It was perfect.
Okay, so I'll just accept that and on behalf of the board. And, I need. Where's that? Okay, so superintendent's report?
Yep, so my report, uh, just, we, I have two items, I'm gonna jump into with Mr. George, one of them in just a minute here, so Brian, you might go ahead and pour yours up. Um, but I did, before we did, before we jumped into that, just this week is uh teacher and staff appreciation week. You know, our district and community are incredibly fortunate to have such dedicated people, uh, across the board that support our district. Uh, the commitment, care, passion, our team's bring to the work is something that I don't think we can actually measure. Uh, but we all know how valuable it is for the success of this district, our school, our students, our community. It's something that we value throughout the year and I made it clear to our staff that we celebrate them this week, but really we honor and celebrate them every day because the work that they do doesn't stop or it doesn't change just because of this week. And I look forward to carrying the energy from this week and the great celebrations that we've had from the food and the items that I'm gonna carry into tomorrow into the end of the school year, so I appreciate, the board is gonna be doing something tomorrow for staff, so thank you to the board for jumping into this celebration with us. So at this point, uh, we talked in March, Dr. Waller presented with the principals regarding data and one of the recommendations and requests from the board was, could you give us an update at the end of the year in particular to the high school cohort? So if you're, uh, uh, great and willing to come back and give us an update around the current cohort, how we have that information. So I'm gonna turn it over to Brian so he can update the board on the information they had requested from the March meeting.
Yes, Bernard, so what I passed out, just so you can start looking through it, I remember when Jenny asked me, please try and see those, what the pot points look like, the pot points requirement. So I added it in there so you can take a look at that. But also I remember Matt was talking about, you know what, talk about community service, are we not promoting community service at younger ages? So I wanted to show you the senior reflective conference as well, but along with those pot points, talking to how community service starts now even at a younger age and being more structured at younger ages really by our social studies department oversees the pot points. And I can talk about that when I get to that slide a little bit more and answer questions. So I was asked to present really on our current cohorts, graduation rate, and where they're at. So what we're gonna talk about today is a show like our senior cohort's data and how we'll continue to prepare all of our students for a successful life after high school. And that's the big thing, is that when they're here, when they're ours, our biggest thing is that you're safe, we have everything they need and we're taking care of them, but we're preparing them for the next steps in their book. They're twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, they're out in the workforce, they're out in the community and that we help guide them, we help give them the skills, and we help prepare them to be the best citizen and best employee that they can possibly be. So our current data, our current numbers, we have sixty students in the twenty-twenty-five cohort. Out of those fifty-six in district students, four are out of district placed. You'll see this data piece, which is eye-catching, is there's seventeen females in our current senior class and we have forty-three boys. And eleven of the students have IEPs, eight have FAWs. When you start looking at these numbers too, so fifty-one of our students are right on track for graduation, three are at risk, one is a twelve, so we just had, I have an asterisk next to that, so he doesn't count towards that sixty because we had a fifth-year senior come back and he graduated in June, or January. We have three alternative place graduates, one alternative placement who's not gonna graduate, and we only have one student considered to drop out. Our senior information, so thirty students completed the Red Jacket community scholarship application, which is right on par as it was last year, uh, year one, oh, let's see, we only had thirteen kids. So that is telling you that now we have more students that are gonna wanna go out and wanna go out and go to college, go to a trade school. Fourteen seniors attended about TCC and one is in divisions. So when we look at the data points too, I mean, it's overwhelming that we're gonna have, um, almost all of our students will be graduating. And then we get deeper into the numbers is that this upcoming year, so ninety-one point seven percent of our students are gonna need graduation requirements. Then if our at-risk population, if they do need that as well, we're at almost ninety-seven percent. The three point three percent who are not graduating, I tell you now, that we can tell you their entire story, where they live, everything we've done is that last thing we ever wanna do is have a student not come to school and drop out. The reason, the main reason why they do drop out is really because of attendance. But the thing is, just because their cohort finishes, doesn't mean we can't set them up for GED and it doesn't mean we can't set them up for a twelve-plus as a fifth-year student. What we do for all of our students, but in particular what we do just for our seniors, starting for all of our students, is our ITSS process. What that is, is the multi-tier support systems. So what we do is, is that every single month, a team of teachers, so ninth grade we do it, tenth grade we do it, eleventh grade we do it, and twelfth grade we do it, is that we'll meet with our twelfth-grade teachers, we come together, and the teachers, what they do is they provide us names and the objective is, when we meet at grade level teams is, is what can we do differently within the classroom? That's that real tier-one intervention. So we work with the teachers and we come up with different strategies, different structural strategies and different interventions they can implement within the classroom. Now, when we circle back together the following month as a grade-level team, and there's still not progress being made, that's where we go to more of our tier-two. So that's where we put more interventions in place with the student, when we go through our student review process. And that's where we come together with collective care team members, plus all of the students' teachers, and we get deeper into things. And when I say that is, we look at really the whole child and what interventions, just not now in the classroom, but what do we have here within the building? And what can we bring in that can strategically put in a place to meet the needs of that particular student? Seniors, what we do differently just for them is, is we have our in danger of not graduating process. And what we do is it starts at the first five weeks, we start to go through the students' report card and we look at, all right, where do they have with their recent exams on the on par, do they have five grades to meet graduation requirements? But also where they currently at academically according to the grade book and if they're campus. And what that does is, if we see the students right around that sixty-five mark, we produce a letter to the families. And what that does is that helps open up the lines of communications between the school and the families. And then what we also do is then we can circle back with the families, or the families circle back with us. And what that does is, is that triggers parent-teacher conferences. And I tell you now, when we come together, especially with our senior families and student and plus the entire teaching team that works for that particular student, we get into some really good conversations, beneficial conversations, to really help support that student but also to really help encourage and motivate and see how we, together, and I say this to the families all the time, is that it's a community and how can we work together to help support your child or your student and make sure they meet graduation requirements? You see in this data point here is that students are going to four-year colleges, is that we have twenty students next year going to a four-year school. We have ten kids going to a two-year, we have one kid coming back as a fifth year. We have three students, and this is quite amazing, going to Ohio Tech, going to a technical sc- uh, college or trade school. Two are going to the military and twenty-one are going into the workforce. Now personally, when I see this number for military only having two, and this is quite an interesting piece, because talking to the military recruiters, one thing that really caught my attention is, they're like, Brian, we don't have a lot traditionally, we don't have a lot of kids coming out of Red Jacket directly to the military. What they see is, is that a couple of years out, that's when they start to see the influx of alumni going into the military. The why behind it, I don't know, but that was an interesting piece that I just won't forget because I feel we have a lot of students with a lot of potential that can really benefit from that piece. Here's a couple of different data points about how, you know, how we've progressed. I mean, how have we furthered our progress here with our systems and our supports at Red Jacket High School? The first thing is, as you see, is the senior reflective conferences and pot points. Now, service learning has been the traditional one, and this is taking the service learning, it's made it more structured and really made it more, with better oversight. So what's happened is the ELA department, they've helped take the lead in prepping all of our students to sit down and go through like a mock interview. The pod teachers, what they've created is, they've come up with different ways so the kids can get out into the community and there are more specific responsibilities. So it's been nice because now we have more oversight, we're preparing our students now for the future, now they're gonna have resumes, um, different portfolios plus also going through a real interview process. And now we're also having our students going out within our communities and getting that real life experience. Another piece is, I have to talk about too, is the number of students we have in our AP classes and our Gemini classes. We consider those college-level courses. And the research proves that students who do go to, who take the college-level class in high school are more likely to go to college, just not go to college, get higher grades, and actually graduate college. So that's the reason why we're so big on, if that's the route you wanna go, let's start getting that experience early on so you have that much more of a chance to graduate and be successful in high school or in college. And I take that personally too, especially having a lot of friends coming from here and seeing a lot of my friends and family members going out to college and going through some of the struggles is that I don't ever want that to happen to our students, is that I want them to be able to learn here and get those skills so they're set, ready to go for that next step in life. Also, alternative pathways and compensatory options. So near state, what they do is they have the traditional, you pass your five exams, you get your twenty-two credits, then you can meet graduation requirements. That's just not like the right fit for everybody, it's not always, it's like this squared peg and reliable kinda concept. So what we've done is, we have different plus-one compensatory options, I call it. So for example, if the kid, if a student can't pass either the global or the US test, what we have is compensatory option of passing the Skills USA. What that is, is another examination which helps prepare students for the workforce. But also we have a Strategies for Success one and a Strategies for Success two, that the student also completes the preparation to take that test, which helps them get set up for co- I mean, get set up for the next steps, but also it prepares them to make sure they're work-ready. And it gets them the requirements they need in the graduation outside of the five examinations. A big piece too is, we have a really strong process for our students to go to Fingerless Technical and Career Center, BOSEs. Our process is that every student goes out and they have a patient, every student that wants to go there has to go on the tour, every student has to go through an interview, and then what we do is we have a really good data set, so where we look at behavior data, we look at attendance data, we look at grade data, and then we look at recommendation data from all the teachers. What we do is we compile that information and that's how we start to have our numbers of who's the number-one student right now going to FLTCC, who's the number-two ranked student going to FLTCC. Because we have our fifteen slots ideally for each cohort, it becomes very competitive. And if we wanna make sure we're sending the best students over to the technical center, because that is a representation also of Red Jacket. And a strong piece of that is, is that we've had zero students drop FLTCC, plus also FLTCC now is not welcoming students back. We have zero students that they are not going to welcome back, they're bringing back every single Red Jacket kid that is currently there. Another big piece too is our increase in scholarship donations. Uh, what I think of like Mr. Breton, so Mr. Breton, I was under, I was communicated with that Phil was going to actually drop Red Jacket and stop donating to Red Jacket. So he's just one of the examples where it's about relationships, knowing people comfortably. Reaching out to him, creating those personal relationships with him, and we have people like him, we have people like Kevin Hawkenrider, we have great members like the Shurro family that donated and help support our students here. We have a lot of students who need that extra financial support to go to a possible dancer, to go to a non-binary university. And now we do have that ability to help offset costs, so when the students now do leave college, that they're not gonna leave with a hundred thousand dollars in debt. Yes, they'll still have debt, but now it's gonna help offset those costs so they can come back hopefully to our community back here in Manchester, Shoresville, and help become members of our community and contribute. Another thing too is our course selection process and course offerings. Traditionally, the way things were is that it was all based off of teacher recommendations. If a teacher thought, if people thought that a student should be in this class, this should be the trajectory, then that was there. It's a big believe, I'm a big believer in equity, and when equity comes in, it's about student choice, student voice, and also providing access. So we need to provide access to these more rigorous classes, having them take part in the classes they wanna take part in. Having them have the opportunities to go to technical center or go in divisions or these different P-tech, um, opportunities that are out there. So what we do is, our first part of the course selection process is, we have students, we have student selections. So students first, the, uh, the counselors go in all the classrooms, they go through where they're at, what they should be taking, or what the specific requirements you have to have, but then here are the different electives. And the students can start now to give us the insight or the feedback, these are the classes I wanna take. Then what we do is, then we look at teacher rec- recommendations. And we looked at between the two, what is the best fit for this student based off of previous year's data? And what's the best way to help the student support their individual visa? And then we have, I wanted to share this with people, is that on June fifth is when we're gonna have our senior reflective conferences. So the first half of the day, we're in all eight periods, the time's gonna be cut in half. And then in the afternoon, you have panels set up, all teachers in different classrooms, and then the students will come. And when the students come, what we do is, individually, they'll both do the interview where they'll speak for the first five to ten minutes. Teachers will ask questions for the next fifteen to twenty, and as I tell the teachers, what this is, is yet you do have these set of questions which are also shared with the students along with a rubric, is that I know these are questions, but you can go off of that knowing, knowing all of our students, and you can be real and ask some real questions that you know pertains to that specific individual. And the most important thing is that this is a time of celebration, this is a time for all of us to be together and celebrate the successes that each, and each and every one of our students have had, especially the hardships. Quick story is that when I was at the water derby two weekends ago, I was with. I was with, I met up with Chris Amos, and Chris Amos said something that was pretty unique, very special. He goes, Brian, this specific cohort is a special cohort. Think about what they went through when they were freshmen, coming in with the April first incident. Then, your first year, Brian, was the first real year outside of COVID. Then, junior year, that's when they start to get into things, where they're getting into these different electives, kids are now going to the technical center, so kids are starting to do more of this, and now here they are as seniors. He goes, that's a pretty resilient bunch. And I couldn't agree with him more, because of the things they've been through, the things they've experienced, to still be as dedicated as they are to their books, plus also knowing their work, plus also the part of their curriculum activities. It's a quite, it's a pretty special group of kids at the end. And I wanna end it too, is that I saw this quote, is that work hard, dream big, never give up. And I always say that it does take a village, and you can't have a better village than a village. No questions?
Well, isn't the reflective, like you said, teachers, is it their current E L A and?
So, each panel's about four people, and it's split up. So, between every teacher that's here in the building, that teaches at the high school level, plenty of support staff, plenty of Officer John Potter, so everybody's involved. They, their ask now is, well, what about next year, do we consider having the board be part of it? Do we consider having community members be part of it? And the thing is, I'm like, let's go through it this year, let's live and learn, let's make it better moving forward. And yes, if you feel like you want other members, and if that's something you wanna do, then I feel like we'll be open and we'll make you part of the panel.
Can we sit in and just observe?
Mm-hmm. If you guys wanna come, just let me know ahead of time, and I can jump in. It'll be hard this year for you, for you, but yes. We can do that. They'll be comfortable. They're gonna be very nervous. So we've been going through, this is how I shake a hand, this is what business casuals do. This is how you walk into a room, this is how you sit. I mean, you, you think that these like soft skills are just so natural, but, you know, when I, I can still remember going through my first interview, I had no clue what I was doing, I was wearing boots. I wasn't ready. And one thing I heard from a lot of our kids was that they want, they wanted to, like, they wanted to have some sort of experience. And I think this is gonna be a great way for them to grow.
Brian, what, thank you so much for all that data and doing all that. I was just curious, um, what, moving forward, do you have any area of growth that you're looking for?
For the district or for the school?
Yeah, just in terms of, um, what we're talking about with, with Mirison, um, completing their final year.
Is that one area of growth is that we're looking at, New York City is also looking at it too, 'cause they're looking for a graduate, is that what can we offer here at Red Jacket? If that's gonna, I'd use the word marketable, but makes people wanna come to Red Jacket. And what, Chris, I'm trying to think of the word, the... So each school, so like we'll team up with Palmac, so Palmac would offer a program, Midlakes would offer a program.
Oh, like the regionalization?
The regionalization piece. So what could we offer here? And we've been talking about this now for about a year.
Right.
'Cause I keep coming up with things and other things, it's like, what can we do based off of what we have?
And most of these programs are masked, are masked out.
They're, most of these is not, they're cutting up like forty percent of applicants, they're denying it this year.
What was it like?
They didn't deny anybody.
Yeah, there's staffing challenges.
Yeah.
And those are tough conversations with families, so.
Is it because of staffing, or is it because of lack of space?
Staff. They have to stay.
If you know people who would qualify for that, they do not have staff.
So for example, our diesel program has six outstanding kids in it right now. We only have, they only accepted one kid so far.
Yeah, uh, like it's a majority of it is staff.
Yeah, we really need to tap into the communities and, and rustle up some of our experienced folks to take on this position.
I agree, like we had John Stappel last year, right, he came in front of the board, you know? Did we take advantage of that opportunity, right, that's what we can look at more.
Yeah, I think as a community, we all could be putting our heads together to think on that, 'cause it's a shame. We have a lot of students and a lot of students that wanna go there and.
But that's also where the thinking comes in, what, can we offer carpentry program here? And when people wanna come to a carpentry program, can we do like an exploratory, exploratory program where we have like the HVAC, the, the HVAC and the electric combined together, plus also a couple of weeks of carpentry? Like can we do something that here, and what would Palmac wanna offer? Like how can we all come together as districts, knowing that, alright, the technical center offers this? What can we all als- also offer that we know that are, that would be beneficial to our students moving forward?
Does each student get the same questions in the interview?
The answer is yes, but also, the panel was told that yes, they said, knowing, we all know each other. So it's like, what, if you wanna change it up, and ask them something a little bit different, go ahead.
Wait, so they don't have all the same questions?
They do, so every single student was given those questions, but also.
Interview questions, or is this what is right on it?
Nope, those are the interview questions.
Oh. And then based on their answers, they can have other questions, got it. And how long is each interview supposed to be?
Twenty minutes plus.
Shorter than a real interview.
The impressive thing is, when they leave, they're leaving with something they can go to a real interview with, or you prep already up, with the experience stuff.
I think the pod point program has been great, 'cause it's only sort of forced, but it has, you know, forced kids to go to meetings and such that they wouldn't typically go to, and experience things they wouldn't typically.
The social studies department and the E L A department, that is absolutely amazing. And the idea of using the social studies and the E L A department is, they can start working on pod points and start working on their portfolios and grading them. So they start doing more there, select it, create ten, more soft, create eleven, and this deep vertically aligning the trickle. Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Brian, I apologize for that second session.
We just have two for branding, I think Scott's gonna be there, sorry about that.
Oh, okay, so we'll have.
Scott, you're gonna do the committee, the branding and, uh, policy committee?
Yep, yeah, um, policy, so we did meet tonight, so we've actually met. In the last four weeks, we've been through in excess of twenty policies. Um, tonight, one was reviewed from last session, we had a question on it, so that's one thing we do. If we have questions, we'll send it back and we'll get it answered and bring it back again. We retired two policies, moved seven forward to the, to the board for next month, just from this session. Um, we're starting to get into a groove, it feels like, we're, we found a new way. Um, so we're getting a summary of changes that Brian will share with the whole board next month. I think it, I think we all agree in the, in the committee, that it's a better way to share with the board, um, sort of changes with a better summary. Um, yeah, we're starting to get some progress, and we're gonna start tackling some bigger ones coming up, so.
And then while we're on.
Commissions.
Rebranding, so we did meet this month, I believe it was the first, third, or something recently. Um, we reviewed the final edits, um, discussed some community feedback and reaction. I think it went well, we chose some artwork, um, and happy to announce that like the Friday following board approval, which is expected in next month, will be an online store created. Um, it's a limited option, so it's kind of exciting, so stay tuned for that.
I was just gonna piggyback on Scott, that we do have a date for the banners to be, uh, put in the gym, they're gonna be July first and July second, so.
Right, some very exciting things discussed, Phil, right now, that's, too much, very exciting.
Well, appreciate a little hard look at everybody's doing on those committees.
No, there's no board call update, maybe it's not, I mean, the March meeting, I'm guessing it will, just, we're doing a little bit, so.
Yeah.
So there's nothing there, so we'll have a date, financial reports, so, so another big knowledge and info boards, just asking any questions.
All right. Does anyone have questions about the financial reports? No, so then I'll accept, um, I'm part of the board, that report. And then new business?
So policies are done, consent, so all of those are fully on, um, consent, kind of, so.
Okay.
And then the number.
Oh, we're gonna vote on this?
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna, um, vote, um, the following policies. Um, A policy sixteen forty absentee military and early male ballots. Sixty-one forty employee medical examinations. Sixty-one sixty professional growth staff development. Sixty-two twelve certification and qualifications. Sixty-two thirteen registration and professional learning. Sixty-two fourteen incidental teaching. Sixty-two fifteen probation and tenure. Uh, sixty-two twenty temporary personnel, and sixty-five, sixty-two employment of retired persons. So can we get a motion?
Motion.
Okay, by Jen, seconded policy. And any questions about any of those? Okay, all in favor?
Okay.
And, and opposed, so that motion carries, and. And. Okay, so we are going to, um, have, discuss the Disney, I'm sorry, Disney trip. Um, if we can have a motion, and Chelsea in a second. There we go, and, uh, any questions about the Disney trip? And, I hope we covered it, um, everybody, and so all in favor?
Yes.
Right, and any opposed? So that's, okay, right, thank you. And then. Okay. So the board of, um, meeting calendar, and, what else?
Work sessions, we're all.
The work sessions, oh, all that in there, um, and I can get a motion for that. Scott?
Yep.
In a second. There. And does anyone have questions about the calendar?
It's, uh, has to be a Wednesday.
Has to be a Wednesday.
That's why I remember we had to do it the, we had to line it up with the, uh, O C's, Vol, Vol. So that was a Wednesday, that's all.
Oh, right.
It's the only one that's not Thursday night. So that's one quick question. Okay, and now we're, can we move on to executive session? So, executive session, um, Chelsea asks the questions, and we vote.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I think we voted, yeah, I thought, yeah, sorry, all those in favor? All right, and then we. Okay, so we're gonna move on to, um, executive session to discuss a minimum of personnel, if I can have a motion. Ooh, Chelsea.
Second.
Um. What? All, all those in favor? Yeah, that's.
We'll head into the conference room.